Call the meeting to order at six oh five. This is a special meeting of the planning commission. So our business today is beginning to look good, the draft. It is. We're so glad you could be here.
Yes, I'm excited.
So glad everybody bought their hard.
Yes.
Their version.
Gold stars for everybody.
You were doubting.
I was like, they're gonna run out of copies.
Holly, Holly gets two gold stars. She brought the last one. You know, a good idea.
I agree.
So Glenn, we'll turn it over to you.
Wonderful. Thank you. I'm excited for the meeting tonight. I'm working on the plan, incorporating the comments from the survey. Public meeting, really taking all the input that you guys have given so far in terms of the new priorities and Simsbury today. Um, was a real pleasure and looking forward to going through the plan with you. I realize this plan, I mean, every word and change shows up in red.
Let me interview you.
It's our name. Um, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't. Yeah, I should.
Brittany McGilpin is our new Simpson Town Planner. It's day two. And so she says she, her first experience was attending a very raucous and rambunctious public hearing last night.
Yes.
As a library and she came. She's got a little news.
Two night meetings in a row. Good for you.
She comes us from, um, West Hartford. Where she was at zoning enforcement office.
Yep.
For years, so. It was a thrill to have.
Happy to be here.
No, that's a fun time because I think working on a town plan is a very forward-thinking visionary document. And so it's good to introduce. So I think, uh, you may recall last time I gave out the sort of bird chart. Um, I think we'll get into the bird chart later, but also on the backside of it is just sort of some basic information coming with levels of plan review. There's often a tendency to jump in on page one and start words something. And I think realistically, my first question for you is in terms of the plan, the layout was essentially fixed because we were updating the 2017 plan. Um, but we did make a number of changes. How did you feel about the organization, the tax, the other stuff is the, um, basic organization and feeling of the plan? Are we in the right territory?
I think so. I've been, I liked it. I actually have a note.
Great.
Good structure.
Yeah, I liked it. I liked, you know, the overarching principles. I liked that. I liked the, um.
The callouts.
Yeah.
Yeah. And this is the great job of, you know, illustrating the points we're talking about.
Hey there. You know, why don't you move down? So.
A lot of good, um, data in here as well.
You know, the funny thing is this, we think that the 2020 census results are going to be issued in the next two weeks.
Right.
On three, actually. We're optimistic that we'll be able to incorporate some of that data and really illuminate more similar issues that you think are going on in the town.
Right.
So that'll be helpful for us.
Yes.
Um, anything else you want to talk about or do you want to just sort of launch into page by page and see? See where we go?
Yeah.
So the cover picture is something I got off the web. I, it's not quite there yet, but I like the concept of the flower bridge. So May is going to be a perfect month to get a cover picture. And so that's my white box little one. Uh, on the disappears on.
Oh, I think the yellow is okay.
The, the yellow is only there. Yeah, I like this, but I think again, we'll get this all sort of color balance and everything else when we get the right picture here. Um, the other picture I had looked at was actually down the bridge itself.
Like this one? On the next page?
Yeah.
You got a little.
But yes, that was the one I wanted to use, but the resolution of that from online sources really, I blew it up. It wasn't good enough. Yeah.
Okay.
Get that other picture. Um, give the flowers.
Do you remember when this was a working one-way bridge? And people would go on and then you'd have to back up and then, yeah.
So.
Wow. Oh, yeah.
Move it back to town. I've driven over it. I had a car. My dad asked if he could borrow it. Normally I hadn't borrowed his car, so I did. He got banged on the front of my car. On that bridge? As he keeps coming around the corner, like to go over and somebody was already coming down.
Yeah.
I still remember that.
The old days.
The old days. Remember when?
Remember?
In these early nineties, yeah.
Seventies.
Yeah. So I think most of the stuff on the most recent. Most of the stuff I've learned is just sort of the preparatory work. The cover letter we'll get to, if the time is right. I think our goal is we're going to try and shoot, or is going to be a public meeting if we can before the Fourth of July.
Well, George, just on the cover letter, there's an A L E S. I just think for my, but I think it's spelled right elsewhere.
Oh, my bad.
No, no, that's okay. People do that all the time. And on the previous page fifteen, this happens to be that thing.
It could be white on and in.
For what?
Yeah, I mean, there's something that's on page one to be fine.
Yeah, what is, I think it's implementation. I could be right.
Yes, you're right. So just.
I heard the handwriting. We'll see how it progresses.
Um, all right. So on page one, we get into the plan summary. This is again, much like the old plan, just kind of a basic explanation for people what a plan observation and development is. Um, and then we wanted to get into sort of the overarching principles. We talked about this a little bit last time. To kind of highlight the things that we think are kind of important this time around. So the concepts of livability. Um, picking up on the A R P's strategy regarding livability, not, not just for A R P's normal mission, but it's a broad policy initiative on their part. Um, the concepts of diversity, equity and inclusion, which gathering steam. Um, and then also the concept of sustainability. The 2017 plan was sort of buried in the back. And that's where it's staying, but to call it out throughout the plan through the documents. So any thoughts or questions on page three or beyond?
I have something on page seven.
Yep.
I can't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, before that.
Yeah, I have something.
No, no, let's do it in order.
Oh, okay. So four, any?
I have something for. Uh, I just think, uh, uh, I, I, I'm glad you made the point. I like the way you, you phrased it that um, it's, it's not a mandate or a regulation. It's important advisory document. I think that's important for anybody in the community. You understand, I mean, you hear P O C D, if you don't know better.
That's right.
You think it might be a legal document, but you said it's a guide towards positive outcomes. I'm, that's great. I think whenever there's an opportunity to, um, uh, emphasize that and put it front and center for people that might be reading this for the first time or have no idea what a P O C D is, I think it's a good emphasis. Thank you. Anything else on four? About page five?
We only made three edits.
No.
No.
Well, we can go back, we can revisit this history. We can go back to the 27 plan as well. Um, how about page six?
I think the fourth line down, should that be misunderstood?
I think I meant it in this way.
Oh, okay.
So we kind of accepted the concept.
Pull it out. Yeah. It was sort of like understood.
Oh, okay. All right. I just wasn't sure. Okay.
That's how I read it.
Okay, no, that's, that's what, okay. Been understood. Okay, I get what you're saying.
Saying that, you know.
Yep.
That we kind of get.
Yeah, you kind of get. Okay.
Now we're.
Yeah.
Part nine.
Yes, I think maybe embraced by residents. I think it's, it's much much better word than understood or the understood could have gone either way, right?
Yeah.
I like that.
Could have gone either way because you had it the other way.
Yeah, I did. I don't know what, but it could have been. Yeah. So. Right.
Anything else on six? How about on seven? Uh, I have a question. Yeah, um, and remind me in case I, I know we probably went over this. Um, so the intended audience for this is just any person in town who is coming down to pick this up. Who are we?
It's such a great.
It is a great.
So there's really different level of audiences. So, uh, at the most basic level, we would like this to be a welcoming, welcoming and informative document for anybody who wants to read it, but particularly residents, because it's about the future of their community. On the other hand, it's got legal ramifications from a policy perspective. And so the planning commission will be involved in its implementation. It's all going to influence zoning commission because they're supposed to look at this plan for consistency with regard to certain applications. And then we're optimistic that in implementation, the board selection and others might pick up in fund strategies in the plan to make it a reality. So it's really got to kind of work at all of the different levels. And so the introduction is it's an advisory document. This is what it's all about. It's our aspirations for the future. We can't it's not like a, a military plan or a corporate plan that people have to obey it. We get people to help us implement it by believing in the, the strategies and the direction that we want to go. So trying to get all those different levels. And I think we certainly want it to be readable, uh, for people and, and hope it works out. Okay. So the reason why I ask is because a lot of like in the introduction when I would read it out loud, it, it read as though I, I had to have kind of like a base knowledge and there are certain things that like that's a great. Promolgate.
Yeah, I had that too.
That's pretty cool. I, uh, that was a word where I was like, if I was just opening this book. Do I? Do I really know? Like, is this making me feel like I want to go on reading? Um. I thought you asked the question because you saw A A R P.
Yeah. And, and then described it as an interest group.
They changed the name. It's no like now, it's not A, American Association of Retired People. It's they ditched that and now they're a public and that's right in their website. So that's what they get. But you know, it's interesting. We used to have a feature years ago. They told you the grade, uh, grade reading level.
Yeah.
The flesh and decayed reading that I used to try to write the documents for a score, the grades level scored eight. Is that was plain language and you weren't getting caught up in it. So now you brought that back and thought, geez, I just wore promolgate. So don't I sound smart? But the issue is no. I think I need to go through and figure out now how to address that. And, and jargon, the, the things that I just want to be very. So if you catch anything like that?
There's a, there's a couple of times where I was reading this. I was like, I understand it when I read this, maybe like the second time I'm like, I, okay, I get it. But if I had to.
Yeah.
Be just a random person off the street, I'm going to go.
And do me a favor and call it out so that I can circle it and uh, it's going to be easier for me than me trying to hunt through and figure out all of those kinds of words. So um, I apologized. That was not my intention, but I, I fell into it, if you will. So now I got to dig myself out of it. Thank you. Um.
Maybe a reticule on it? I have a note. Um.
How about the author figure out?
You're a large, it's like, come on.
So.
Can you bring my source?
I don't know.
Source.
I don't.
It was on four. Right in the middle, right after.
Yeah.
Right. I need the right hand, um, of the nineteen eighty-three.
And look at that. It was a word change. So I had to, you know, it's not like it was there since twenty seventeen. I can't even you know, blame the prior, prior author, right? I gotta take it on the chin.
What was that? How was it?
It was right under the nineteen eighty-three.
It's just. I don't. Don't remember why.
Well, I think we're trying to. To Glenn's play on four, though, it probably, I can't say it. Um, and there is that legal aspect to the state statute on it. So in that particular word, I'm like, I sort of understand why we would use that term instead of promote because it does have that such. I'm just going to go home and find easier words.
I think promote works here because I think that, that's what the goal of the document is. So the statute can use a word such as promolgate. I'm not sure that they do, but I, I think that in the situation like this, if we can defer to a simple delivery that gets our point across, that'll just enhance the document. Got it.
You had some.
Picture shobbing. Um, on, on seven, I have, um, an issue with the first sentence. Um, it says, one of the fundamental shifts since the, since the nineteen twenty, uh, P O C D is the growing commitment to equity, diversity, inclusion. Um, I, I don't think, I, I can't say that we have a growing commitment. I don't think that's fair for the past. And in fact, one of the things that brought me to Simsbury is that it was so different than where I grew up, you know, twenty-three years ago. And you know, um, it was fifteen years ago that the Simsbury Free Library wanted to get to the bottom of the urban legend about Martin Luther King. Twenty years ago that the students made national news by taking that research and, and spending a lot of time. And I think we've always been very open, uh, and I think we're a good community. So I think what, what drove this wasn't um, to is our growing commitment, but the, um, desire to articulate our commitment that we felt when we reviewed this with other, uh, groups that some of our word choices like character could have meaning, a different meaning to people who didn't know what we meant by it. And so that we went to make explicit.
I think there has been a growing commitment. So we did the P O C D when we did this in really the two thousand sixteen.
Right.
You weren't having the, um, you know, the, the rainbow crosswalks. You weren't doing affordable housing stuff. You weren't talking about character. You weren't talking about. We weren't. It, it just wasn't what was, what was in. So that's, so, so I would say I, in my, I mean, I can go either way. I don't care. But I do think over the last five years particularly, there has been a growing commitment. Not that we weren't there before, but I, I do see it as something that has taken on a lot of steam in the last five or six years. So.
I think it's something that we. But I, for example, the first thing we did after we created, you're right, it was really two thousand and sixty we did most of the work. And then we drew the, as soon as we created the P O C D, we knew that we'd had a lot of, uh, action items. And we said, let's not wait ten years. Let's see what we need to work on. And the very first thing that we all agreed to, it was, and we took a, a little vote on all of the things we could work on. And the thing that we all coalesced on was affordable housing. We realized that it isn't like it was an oversight that it needed special attention. And so that was, again, that was pre and down. Uh, right. Uh, you know, I can remember I was at a, a meeting in Washington DC back in two thousand and eight or something. And it was very unusual. I was at a cybersecurity convention where it was nothing but all the big companies and me, you know, I got to be there, but you know, it was, you know, uh, Exxon and all the, the PetroCam and everybody. Long story short, the keynote speaker made a beeline for me uh, at the, at the, it, it, the meeting's, um, break. Specifically for me, not because of my company name, because of the word Simsbury. And he wanted to share with me what a great town he thought Simsbury was because he had come up, he had, uh, taken advantage of, uh, the, um, the ABC houses in another community and had visited a friend here. And this was in the eighties, you know, and well, how the welcoming nature he felt here. And, and when I first moved here in two thousand, I was like, whoa. I'm so glad I, you know, we arrived somewhere, we, we feel that these are the values that we stand for. So I just think saying, I, I, I rather articulate or.
But did the diverse community feel the same way? That's what I mean. I do think it's, I, and I feel like I do think.
But our reasoning was to articulate that, that we felt that people, it was brought to our attention that people might not understand what our meaning was, but our meaning has always been inclusive. So I think we've always had a growing commitment. I would say that our knowledge has expanded and grown since the twenty seventeen P O C D. I think we've all been educated through public forums and public hearings.
Yeah.
And that's what we're trying to adopt, that education and that awareness that we have built over the past, for me, three, three, three and a half years. Yeah.
So I'm listening to the conversation. I've got a couple of thoughts here. I just want to run by you. I think that part of the phrase is that the fundamental shift since twenty seventeen short changes, if you will, this growth, this, this awareness over time. So I think what I'd like to third in here in some way, shape or form is one of the key elements of this P O C D is to express our growing awareness and growing knowledge about diversity and inclusion. And a desire to express Simsbury's commitment to that.
Right, that, that's.
I like that. Yes.
And then I think you used the phrase, I think welcoming nature. Is any, my initial reaction was, I think that's exactly the phrase that Martin Luther King used when he reflected on his time in Simsbury.
You know, I, I think you're right. I hadn't really.
And suddenly it just hits me. So it's not just an ephemeral thing that we're saying today. It's a reflection from somebody who people recognize that was forty, fifty years ago.
And, and again, that gentleman who would just only spend a short time here visiting his friends forty years ago. So I, I think we, we need to be proud of that as a town.
So I'm going to.
I can tell you thousands of towns that aren't like that.
I understand. So I think what I'm going to try to do is try to rework this page just a little bit to capture these thoughts. Um, just as an aside. All of the, um, text in here will go black, if you will, for the next edition of the plan. And so the changes that we make will be red. It's just so that we can keep track of the iterations, um, as we go along. And then eventually when we get ready to go to public informational meeting, everything will be, you'll, you'll have the red line version, but it's not the best.
The only thing on here for the last year on page seven is the air quotes for diversity champions. The air quote, you know, around that makes it feel like we're doing it because we have to. Like those quotes just.
We got that off of their website.
We should probably circle back with them and let them know.
There's no reason to apologize. That's what it is. Quotes can be apology. And there's no reason to do that.
Not when you're championing.
Right. That's a good point.
I mean, I walk around like this all day.
But you're right. You're, he's taking essentially the quote from that.
But that is done. How would we get that feedback? What do we just add?
Well, I think what I can do. Yeah, I think Cheryl. And if I just take out the quotes, I think that.
Probably won't stay on. They're not going to sue us for. Challenge.
The last paragraph, I wasn't sure what we were trying to say there. So I'm wondering if some of that can be incorporated in what you're going to put in the first.
Um. So my thought process here was that, um, I, I went through this plan, looking at strategy recommendations with now sort of a lens of the E I. And I wanted people to know that, that this had happened as part of this plan. This was a conscious thing that we had done. And then we also highlighted it in different places throughout. Some people could find that. So that's what I was trying to express here. Um, I'm just going to make a note here. Take another look at this paragraph.
Well, I'm wondering, could, could that paragraph in the first? Should it be in one paragraph or in a separate? I don't know.
I, I thought it was important to get back to the, to the mission statement from the D E I council.
Okay.
And, and, and let people know that we have.
Oh, I got, okay.
And then, then lead and in this P O C D we. Highlighted. Anything else on six or seven?
Uh, the second paragraph here, Simsbury is a town that welcomes somebody. Did we, was that pulled from a website or?
The E I website. So that's what they adopted as their vision.
Okay. Cause when I read it, I was thinking, I, you know, it's in a town that welcomes somebody, takes action for future community members by like, what is the action? Cause I, I do notice that we kind of circle back to this thought about two or three times. But there isn't a idea of what the town has as a vision for that. You know, what does that, what does that mean to the town?
I'm not sure the P O C D would be the place to do that.
Yeah.
I don't think that's the document. Or I get what you're saying. I think that's more D E I.
Yeah.
Than the P O C D.
That, so I guess what I was thinking was like, wouldn't it say something that's a different talent that, you know, by future community members by ensuring that, you know, blank or taking, I don't know. That's what I was thinking, like the end of the sentence, but
I read that as the vision.
Right.
Council and then the mission, those three bullets with how.
How they were going to do it.
That's how I interpreted it.
No, I think that's the way I read their website and that's why I tried to reflect it. So I, I prefer not to change their words. I think at some point in time, we should share this page with Cheryl and say, okay, look, I mean, uh, this, we're, we're trying to honor your work and commitment and, um, portraying honestly.
That makes sense. That's why, that's why I'm there.
But I agree. You want action steps, I guess. Yeah.
Um, how about pages eight and nine?
Um, on page eight, I, um, um, on page eight, I want to bring out, um, that something that's not on page eight. Um, but, uh, there's something called, um, uh, Simsbury Sustainability uh, Committee, I think. And in this document, we refer to it by its old name. And, um, when there's some action items or something, uh, and so away on the page, it doesn't have the number in the very last page. We have legends from leaders partners and we have, um, C E T F. And, and that's a clean energy task force. And that's what then we named to be the Simsbury Sustainability Committee. But I know we're just, I don't know if that's official yet because evidently you have to board of selectmen have to agree to that. I do know how.
You just need to call Mark Scully and ask him what the name of this committee is.
Well, that's what, I mean, I'm the liaison on that. And that's what we've been calling it. But I know it used to be that. And then he had to go through.
I think it is official. That's what I thought. Yeah.
And toward that end, we're having a meeting on Thursday. And I will not speak for that whole committee because I'm just, you know, a liaison. But I, I just wanted to mention that I'd like to discuss, make sure that they agree with this summary. And if I might bring this back next Tuesday with any it looks great to me, but I know Mark's got his own idea.
No, I think Mark had, uh, in my, uh, interviews with Mark way back, he had asked for a more prominent role for sustainability. I thought that we had accomplished quite a bit. So we had talked as part of the quote revolutionary versus evolutionary arrangement to move it out front. And the commission said, no, now what? We're going to embrace it, but it's not necessarily bigger than the others. But I think this now is a reflection that it carries through the plan and highlights sustainability throughout. So I think if.
I like it. I mean, but I, I, I'm near the.
I'm good with that.
I just, I, I'm just going to review this with.
The first, I want to get people's buy-in so that.
Exactly. That's all. So if there's any nitpicking.
Anybody want? Anybody want?
Anything else on eight or nine? How about ten or eleven?
So, um, yeah, I have some stuff. No, thank you. I have zero of it. Um. No, it's super, super small. Um, when we say what we want to protect. I love that we said enhanced community asset. Because we're trying to like really get concrete about what we mean instead of being so ambiguous. But we left the last bullet, it's community spirit. So I'm wondering if we connect that back to maybe page forty-five and talk about it being events or amenities. Like if that's what we're talking about, like that connectedness. Oh, God.
Thank you.
We have to, go ahead. No, no, go ahead.
I was just looking at number five about protect natural resources. I, I think I, I, I didn't read the whole thing yet, but I, I did get through to some part that, that we should mention about. Um, you know, I know one of the things that, uh, Open Space has been working on is the native plant policy. I think that that is, is a natural resource because there is, you know, you've got um, burning bush grown in the woods and you've got invasives everywhere. I know one of.
burning bush grown in the woods and you've got invasives everywhere. I know one of the things that we're pushing very hard on conservation is whenever a building plan comes to us, we, we always go to the landscape plan and insist on the planning of native plants. And in a couple of cases, it made suggestions on where to change these things. So I think that, um, maybe something in there. So it's a little specific on that too. Cause yes, natural resources, that's, I, I mean, I understand what that means. It's a little maybe two umbrella like and remain diligent never to protect water quality. Obviously that's important. But I also think it's important to talk about, um, na- native plants, you know, the wetlands, things like that.
So I think we're going to do that. But I think that this could benefit, I mean, this is, this is what I call sometimes for my perspective, the first of knowledge.
Right.
I know what I mean by natural resources, but even as Mark's, my point is that I didn't express it really well here. So I think in parentheses, there's some other ways we can say such as
Such as or, right, or E G.
So this has been to be just kind of a big overview, almost an executive summary. But I think more, we could do more than
Do a little more specific because, um, Yeah. I mean, I agree protecting natural resources is really important, but what that means to me and someone else, um, you know, so.
Perfect. Thank you. And why did, why did they choose to, um, add the word assets also? Cause that was the word that we were using before character. And so when I started thinking about character and it's word non-broad of these days. The thought that came to me in Simzary, I thought was there's so many things that we actually have here in Simzary that other communities really don't have. And so those are assets that, that we take for granted that contributes to our quality of life and community. There's also things that I think enhance our sense of place, which was a major theme back in the two thousands and P O C D. And so I thought that I was going to try to replace the word character in the document with either assets or sense of place or whatever. But that's, that's where assets came from. Do you think it's, where's it going to work?
No, I, I was thinking about, cause I guess I was, when I first read it and I saw that the, the red was in there, my thought was like, well, I guess what do we define as an asset? And then the question is like, why don't we just say that we're maintaining the community because the entire community is an asset? Versus kind of making that distinction. So I kind of wanted to know what is, why we chose the word asset or character.
Character was, but now I'm thinking, you know, I think you guys have brought up thoughts about wanting more detail on this. I think each of these headings have actually benefited from a little see page forty-two, page forty-nine. And now somebody says, yeah, I'm not even going to read anymore. I want to go see that. Boom.
That's a good idea. That's a good idea.
It's like, it's like providing like a web link when you read something, it's the blue and click on it takes you to more specifics. I mean, if you think of it now, because that's the way most people look at things now. You know, they don't read it like
So I've been doing that with zoning regs lately. I mean, I, I think we should be doing
I think, I think that's a great idea. So I think that's, people's brains are more wired nowadays.
Cause most people are going to read this online and
Yeah, right.
Two comments I had, where you'd say over nine hundred units. Are we assuming that's apartments?
Can you tell you that?
What was that?
That was my, cause I wrote down apartments. I was like, that was
Yeah, I didn't know. I said, do we need to be specific or is
So the issue is, at this point in time, the only official census data that's been released from twenty twenty is for the, um, re
I was going to say the fair share.
No, it wasn't the fair share, but the voting, you know, reconfiguration to zoning districts.
Oh.
So what they have to do is get population and some of their information. So what they shared to professionals was number of residents, number of housing units, number of occupied housing units, um, then there was one other
So you, we don't know what that, none of that. Okay.
We do, we should know.
We do. I mean, I could, we could go back from building, but it's two it. And we know, we know it's probably seventy, thirty multi.
Yeah.
We know, I mean, we know.
Okay.
We could wait three weeks.
I was just curious. I didn't know we had to be specific there. Nine hundred units. Cause I was like, what's that? You know, is it apartments? Or I, I mean, it's kind of
It is mostly apartment.
Okay. That's what I thought, but yeah. All right. And you know, that's, um, the state trends also is that our state is getting older. When, when you look at maps, it's amazing, um, how much older Connecticut is getting.
What country is?
So we're the fifth oldest state in the country now. And when you look at maps from like ten years ago, and now you look, it's like darker and darker because more and more, uh, it, like every town just about in Connecticut is going older.
And that, that's the information I'm most interested in seeing in the census of the age distribution. Because in the last plans, we have our own population projection model that we use. And I want to put the age numbers in to see what it shows. And then what, if those trends continue, what it could show.
Right.
And it's quite possible this Simzary may be one of the few communities in the state of Connecticut, the median age will go down. And that's actually, I think, a significant point to raise. We just don't have the data yet.
Right.
All right. Anything else on ten or eleven? About, uh, twelve?
And fifteen bullet, um, capitalization of assets.
That's wrong.
On page two?
Page twelve, well, well, no, fifteen.
I didn't listen. It's not real.
No, no.
See it because you've been looking at it.
Oh, yeah. I liked that fifteen. I liked the whole implementation.
Yeah, I did really like it.
Yeah.
You mentioned the S, right? The S that's capitalized.
Yeah.
I didn't see that.
Yeah, I didn't see that. But I liked that. That was, I like that. Cause that's, I think, really important that we hold our feet to the fire and
I was, and this is just a small point. In twelve, I was just wondering if there was sort of a more elegant way to say Simsbury intends to continue to provide community service. Intends to continue to provide.
Yeah, I get you.
You know, it's just, it's just a little
A lot of verbs in that sentence.
I can't, I can't think of a more, uh, I, I got with the point, but
You want to say will, something like that?
You know, it's interesting. The last plan, we started off We said Simzary will do this.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
And I gotta tell you, five years later, I read that and it sounded, you know, these are our aspirations. So circumstances change as they happen in the last five years. I got away from that, but I think I'll take a look at
I, I'm just, right, remember it's I agree with that intent. Cause it's obviously, this isn't like a will and shall and yes, you know, it's not, it's not like a collective bargaining. It's, you know, it's, it's this aspirational plan. And this is certainly very strategic and a greater umbrella here, but you know, and if not, if not, it's fine.
We need to continue to.
I mean, we just say we didn't.
I know. It's, it's interesting. Cause I, only, only have gotten pushed back in a couple of ways. People say, well, they see what you're saying, but we already
Right.
So you have to recognize. So, but I think it's the, do continue to provide.
It tends to continue to.
Do continue providing now kind of solves the problem. I think, you know, that, that may be solved. I'll, I'll go through and
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, the word ongoing, how? Simsbury intends ongoing community services and facilities. It doesn't cut out a whole lot of those words. Simsbury intends ongoing community
I wish your ongoing works well there. Let me take a look at, taking a, an active verb out of it.
Maybe one of those things when you wake up at two in the morning, you're like, oh, of course. And then you won't write it down. No.
He's still at five thinking about why he should have done it. And then all the other things you should have done.
Right, exactly.
So, uh, page thirteen, we start the conditions and trends section. Sorry. Quick, quick, quick aside.
Yeah. Um, for eleven, sorry. Uh, what the halfway through the census says, we're creating a more sustainable community and more adaptable community in the future. What are, what are we being adaptable to? Was kind of the question that I will ask in my grant.
So the, the chapter goes on sustainability and resilience. So I meant it to be, uh, more sustainable community and more adaptable will mean more, I can just say more resilient. So we'll change it's adaptable. Um, I think that's really the concept that we're trying to get to in, in, uh, resiliency overall. So I think, just going to use the word results. I don't have to change the word. We're going to take, replace that. So Fifteen, yeah, sixteen is just what we know in the census information today. And, and hopefully we'll have more information in a, in a couple of weeks here. Again, I, I do think, I was surprised when I saw the population numbers and looked at them in this little table here on page sixteen. We had net out migration for three decades in Simsbury's history. And the last decade, we had now net in migration. Our net is new house construction, but it's also because of a younger population. So it's a, it's not a repeat of the fifties, sixties and seventies, but it's a reversal of sort of the, we're a more dynamic community than we were in the last three decades. But that was important. Yeah. Uh, anything else on fifteen or seventeen? Eighteen or nineteen?
Eighteen minor, for a percentage after the four twenty eight.
About twenty or twenty-one?
Oh, I think Yeah, wait, tax base decrease.
So the challenge I had with this page is that
Are you on page nineteen? It decreased about ten percent or decreased to about ten percent?
I think it decreased to about ten percent. Well, I'll check that.
So you want to keep the two in. It's not, it decreased about ten percent.
No. So if you open the sidebar, the third table down in the sidebar.
Yep.
According to this.
Oh, got it. Okay. Decreased. Okay. Then that answers that question. Thank you.
So you knew that and you're saying it's decreased. We should probably throw in whatever's for in the paragraph.
Yeah. Page twenty and twenty-one, I struggled with a little bit. Given our budget on the project, we didn't really have the ability to go back and recreate the entire land use database. So we've done strategic updates. And so part of the ploy here was to use smaller pictures that I don't really sort of show the detail. People don't get a chance to see exactly what's going on. On the other hand, we could be fair to people and actually, and then there is a map on the town's website. If you go to the, uh, map express portion of the website, then we can refer people to there.
It's a fair laying.
It is a function of just the size. I mean, could we not just make them bigger and have them as
I could, but I can't, I can't verify to the actual information in the sense that the last land use map for Simzary was twenty eighteen. That's what on the town website. Um, we did one in twenty sixteen for the P O C, for this P O C D, the prior version is updated. And now I think, uh, Geo did some strategic updates based on our knowledge of metal wood and
Right.
utilities, solar for, and what's ever. So Why don't I, I'm going to do this for next step. I'm going to add a hyperlink into the map express website, which if it ever continues to be updated over time in the future, knowing you have nothing else to do, we'll drive around.
Yeah, that seems like it. Then again.
I think the small ones are fine. I mean, the whole takeaway, maybe. I'll tell you what I took.
It's hard to read the ledger.
On twenty.
Can we make it a higher quality?
Higher res, yeah.
I mean, that's hard to be fine if it weren't so blurry.
These are P P S coming from us. That we, we, we don't, we can't create a map layers. That's
Well, let me see what I can do though. Because I think the idea would be, I think these maps are the ones which are on the town's website. So when we hyperlink to them, what we're going to say is higher res images are available on the town's website and
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they're off and on. So I think, uh, we can now stick with the smaller image here and more current and, you know. Right? I'm on twenty-two and twenty-three or twenty.
Well, yeah, I just, are we in the process of obtaining valuations of all? Again, we did.
We did.
Yeah. Okay. Oh. But is it expected, is the grant list expected to increase?
Grant list went up and one of your tax rate will go down. Mill rate will go down.
I don't know the grant. I thought Lisa had said in our meeting that it wasn't. I don't know. Okay.
No, I need to, I need to check that.
Well, the reveal will, then I can walk that down to the finance director master.
Yeah. Cause like, yeah, the grant list was certified at the end of February. So they use that for the, we're in the budget process. They're going to set the tax rate. So the data's there. I just didn't get it and kind of
Yeah, it, it, when, when, when it reflects the grant list, yeah, I think that, I think the local, the, the, the local audit is evaluations all in them. So they're still paying higher property, even though the tax rate
Right.
Right.
Mill rate went down.
True, mill rate is down.
It is, it's a two point five percent growth in, in the grant list.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very much.
Yeah. Okay.
But then there is going to be an overall increase in taxes only because
Right. So that's good.
Many members of our community.
Yeah. Okay. I just wanted, I verified.
No, it's good. What I'm door knocking, that is the biggest
The challenge always is you ask people, what about your municipality? The first thing they jump to is the tax bill to get in the map. I don't think about all the other things. But that's when I can say taxes are too high.
But you know, when we talk about affordable housing, even if you can afford a house, you're not going to be able to afford a tent. That's, that's, you know, and I, I know a lot of people at the lower end of that spectrum.
Okay.
So, uh, chapter three now is an overview of community issues and concerns from the public meeting and from survey, et cetera. So, uh, any thoughts or questions on twenty-three?
Yes. Uh, it's minor, but we, what is a workshop meeting? And why do we choose to have two? Why is there a difference? Why don't we use like workshop or meeting? Cause we kind of, I noticed a couple of times in there. There's like, cause I feel like a workshop is a meeting. Yeah.
Well, it sounds like you're doing something though. It sounds like doing something at a workshop.
Workshop, man. A workshop and a workshop meeting. So that was my question.
Workshop meetings twice as good. Oh, I see your point. It's too, you, you need the word, you need to qualify work.
Right. This is a special meeting, but it's a workshop. Yeah.
Well, so this would be a special workshop meeting.
I just use that phrase all the time. So I just fell into it and you're, you know, thank you. It's sort of like, you know. How about on twenty-four, twenty-five?
Well, I, I'm back to twenty-three. I got a couple of comments. The, the workshop meeting to me meant, yeah, um, it was involving Simsbury residents in that. It was a broader group than just a workshop between people that meet together all the time. Um, but the next line, interviews with key local officials and organizations. Is that, is that, is that, uh, a sidebar anywhere in this? Who they are?
No, I can do that. And I mean, this is, we talked about this before. So I interviewed back in the fall into the early winter, a bunch of people, uh, people representative of local boards and commissions, E D C, uh, for zoning
Chamber, mainstream.
Chamber, mainstream. Thank you. Just, just a whole bunch of people, uh, town engineer, a lot of staff people trying to understand what was going on in the different departments, the issues before you. So I do think it's fair for me to list those.
Yeah.
Well, you have to, I'm just.
Well, no, but other people may have the same question like, well.
I would just. Not the person, personally.
Yeah, yes. Right.
Thank you.
I mean, you have so much detail backing up everything in there when.
We, you, is there not a.
Do we do a little summary of the public process?
Anywhere in terms of.
This is what we did. We did an online survey. We did, it's here, it's right here. It's here, it's where it is. Okay, got it. Okay.
Yeah. There are some summaries on the next page, as you will see. So here's a little workshop meeting.
Are you okay with this?
You didn't want to mention this.
I have it up here.
Yeah, there, there's some.
So, this, this is me, not being too bright on slide twenty five. We have the three categories, and I could see in the chart where we have a space, I'm being a little dinky, but I didn't see the space carry forward where like two to three goes, or three doesn't seem connected to four.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I had that question.
It literally was like drawing a line in mapping.
Yeah, it looked, yeah. I had a question.
I tried to introduce the concept of the line space to show that there really are three groups, there's two leaders.
Uh, yeah, it is great. It was just a.
Yeah, but that doesn't follow through.
But it doesn't, right, and then you've got a space between three and four.
No grouping space.
Like, there's no, but, but the bars aren't spaced, you see what I'm saying? So it's, it's not.
I have that. Yeah. To do in words sometimes.
I do, yeah.
No, fairness, it might have been in one version, but then.
Well, you know, I agree. I'm just saying in this version.
Yeah.
Thank you for validating. It wasn't just me.
I liked the comparison down below, top issues in twenty twenty three and sixteen.
Yeah, yeah. And I think it's, I, I was implying to try to draw lines and I just realized those people can figure it out. We don't need to draw a line.
Nope, I liked that.
Yeah.
Oh, on page twenty four.
Yeah.
Um, over a hundred residents from all parts of Sinsbury residents attended the meeting. Do you see that last? We probably can take out that second.
We definitely can't. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
These, you know, these images on the bottom of twenty four look much better on my screen, so I gotta figure out how to get better images there. The, maybe I'm just gonna.
These are pictures of the responses. Is that what it is?
Yeah, the dots.
Dot exercise.
Seem bad. Like you can read it, you know. Yeah, it's the rotten corridor, sorry about all the industrial stuff and some.
So my question is when we print this, it's done at a professional printer.
Apartment.
And you do it, cuz I, you, you printed this like off like a laser printer, right? So if we do it at a professional printer, they're, they're gonna need a higher res photos.
Yeah, so I think.
So that, so that they can inlay those and make it print clear. Because well, once, once it's professionally printed, it should look clear as long as the.
The current plan, the twenty seventeen plan was printed by, I think it was, you had a man press out of Metal Town, they just used a, a high.
Right.
And that would, that's the same plan.
Right, but the, the.
We need better image.
My point is that it'll only be as good as the image you provide. So if you have better image or whatever, if you pull stuff off the internet, it's automatically low res.
Right. So this is covering each of this photo.
It's not a small, it's generally. So that's what. That's all I'm saying is that somebody's done.
George, for an actual view, please visit George's office.
I just relocated. But I'd be saying, the, uh, the idea was, well, can we hyperlink to these? Yeah, I have pictures of them, but they need to be, they need to have a stable web address.
And they need to be in a context somewhere. I mean, the maps are in context.
You know, I, I think.
I would say random exhibits, but it's a random exhibit, I think.
I think they're fine for what it's, it, it's just, you're giving the information about what, I think it's fine.
But I do have the maps in my office.
As an old person.
No, I think, let me see what I.
Do you want me to try?
It's not a bunch of the overall P C D. He's just putting in your information, but it's not gonna be something that.
And I am.
But it's not, I think that's minutia. It's not.
Like, let, let, to know anything about it. It was a whole facility dialogue about what was, what was important about developing and growing, like, you can see it.
I know, yeah. So let me see if I get better images on this page. Uh, how about page, anything else on twenty four, twenty five? How about twenty seven?
Was the survey open? I thought it was more like six weeks. It was more than four weeks, wasn't it?
I can go back.
We have, we know the exact dates. We know them.
I think you're right, cuz I think it was like four and six.
It was, yeah, everyone pushed it. You're right. It was before Thanksgiving.
No, I thought we did Thanksgiving through.
Jan one.
Yeah.
We went through the whole holidays.
Yeah, it's no, I'll check it.
Okay, I just, just, you know, give ourselves credit for having it longer.
Now, how did you feel about this chart? So I'm a little bit of a nerd and a wonk, but it seemed to me that we asked the same question two ways of people. We said, how important is this issue to you? And then how good a job do you think the town is doing on it? And that allows us to create this performance importance graph. And so what we see is that people feel that the top right quadrant, preserving open space, maintaining, enhancing visual appearance and protecting natural resources are important, and they think the town's doing a good job. And then some of the other quadrants, it's like, it's not that important to us. Some of the other stuff, or we just don't think it's important, but we're not doing a good job. So, but you gotta really kind of look at it and ponder it, and it's not.
It's okay, so.
Is it okay?
I like it, but what really, when you went through this with us and you broke it out, you said, you, you spelled it out. Keep doing, do more, do better. I think those were your terms. How many do we want to overlay those?
And the resolution is a little funky, too, so that's.
This is like the screen grab. Yeah.
And I, I thought it was good personally to add, but I think we need to do this a lot to it.
Can we designate what this X axis and Y axis line is for? Is that, I'm assuming that, I don't know what the actual.
Uh, this is, um. This is on the chart that we had given people to give us a ranking in terms of one to five. How do you think we're doing on this? And so this is the average, if you will, on what those rankings or scores turn out to be. So, some people thought it was tremendously important, you have a five, others go to that, give it one, but this is the, then the averages.
The red line is the average, meaning green.
Is the median.
Median.
In other words, is that true? Mean or median? Now, let me go back and look that up because it can't be the median because. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and it is the median. Right? Because we've got six above, six below, seven or seven below, because we've got, we've got an odd number.
Yeah.
So. Let me go back and recheck that. But I think what I might do is add the quadrant titles.
Yeah.
Which is to say, you know, important.
Yeah.
Doing well, cause it can have a good work type stuff. And then. Need to work, need to work. Or, you know, and, and again, it may be a priority for the future, so those are gonna maybe be the world's selection and others, but I think we can call it that.
I have a typo, Josephine one.
They definitely do.
The lap, the third paragraph as part of the online survey participants were asked to consider.
Oh, good for you. Thank you. Oh, page twenty seven?
Well, didn't we, on number four? Didn't we do that last time, too?
Yeah, but I mean, so this, this is updated input.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
With the following refinements. Okay. And why is it highlighted? The yellow highlights.
I wanted to call this out for you guys in terms of, of our approach to the sense of character. So again, as I explained to Marcus earlier, that I replaced it with ambiance, the sense of place. Um, but also this reference here to Public Act twenty one, twenty nine. Um, this, this phrase is, it's a little strong in terms of the wording. Um, Public Act twenty one, twenty nine removed this word, statutes and purposes of zoning since it had been used to oppose affordable housing and other community changes. That's, that's kind of a strong statement, so I wrote it, but I'm gonna represent this as being sort of your, your thoughts. Are you okay with that wording or?
I think it's education. I think, I'm, in case people wonder why, you know, this isn't arbitrary, this is, this is required and.
And then eight, nine and ten was simply because I wanted you guys to know again that this town has been doing master planning work in different areas. Um, so, uh, those have been incorporated here.
And, um, this is picking, but, uh, the first sentence, retain the organization from this twenty seven P O C D or of the P O, twenty seven P O C D. I just thought when I was, as I was reading it, I said from, I thought retaining an organization of people versus.
Oh, okay, got it.
You want to add the, um, to eight, nine and ten, we, we, since it's worth listing the incorporated items, you want to say affordable housing thing? Or I think. Oh, it just wasn't yellow.
I mean, I mean, you did a slop of work in specific instructions and didn't act like that.
I think you read it too much now and it's all bleeding together.
I don't have any more change.
Okay, so people stop reading the plan. I'm not gonna read it. And then page twenty eight is basically the second stage. Now we're about to get into the policy chapters of the differences between goals, strategies, policies, action steps, leaders and partners, just so that when they get to their first table, they'll, they'll kind of understand it better.
Uh, quick, quick aside, for twenty seven, on that list, are we gonna have kind of what we did on the, um, introduction where there will be referencing of what pages, things will kind of reflect where we say, say, say like, um, for number six, like we're revisiting, what is P A four ninety? Um, do we have a page that kind of says what that is or like, uh, and number four, what is saying like incorporating survey and then put.
I think it's gonna be a target for Marcus, because I think, for example, the concept of sustainability and even livability, there's multiple icons, so I can only send people to one place. And so it gets, it's gonna get kind of hard. Um. Don't figure it out.
Okay. So, in, okay, now, let me see it. I didn't catch it last night, you know, late in the night, last minute. Do you want to start? Well, I think adding D E I and sustainability to the approach. Do you want to do it them first, or you want to talk about what we started with? Like in the border month we did, like, we really started with term character, and then the open space, and then the workshop. Cause the workshops informed the D E I, it could be a nitpick.
Yeah, I, I.
But I'm just, like, when you think about the approach, it seems like we're starting off with D E I. That just happened to the person that.
No, but you know what? I think we actually started with livability, which is, so livability should be in there as number one. Then we went to D E I.
You're doing it the way we're building it out rather than.
Correct. Right, so I need to get that one in there.
Sure.
So chapter four is, uh, about protecting natural resources.
Uh, Glenn, this brings back to twenty seven, um. Don't, don't we have a section in here, I'm trying to remember, that mentioned more about P A forty at. Uh, P A, uh, four ninety.
No, I think we're, you know, we're gonna get back.
It's kind of.
He was saying should, uh, as, as found on from more information page. You know, we were talking about hyperline.
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
Just be careful because, you know, every, in all the general areas, there's, there was.
There's references. Yeah. It's not very obscure. I mean, the P, the P A four ninety is.
I'm reading the approach. It's like, what drove us to do this and what did we choose to adopt in the changes between seventeen and twenty three? Now, like, this isn't like an index, right?
Cause I think it breaks up, I like the flow of this.
Yeah.
To say we're gonna go to all these, when it's in here later, I agree with you. It's, it's the overall approach. You're the ones like landing on a chapter.
Yes.
Right.
So, uh, natural resources, uh, the major changes in here, I think I got quite a lot of input and feedback um, from Marjorie in terms of the, uh, work of the Conservation Commission, et cetera. The challenge ended up being, as part of our conversation that we had at last week, that we had so many strategies and action steps in the last plan, really the vision got lost. So this is concise and strategic, I think that's kind of the direction we tried to go in here, um, to do this. So I think we've tried to hit the highlights. Conservation Commission's doing a job, a great job. Um, I think I had a correspondent from Marjorie that she wanted, uh, to qualify her pathways like in every chapter of the plan. I, I, you know, no, there's one chapter in the plan with all other pathways, each to go, and so we'll try to address that there. Um, so I think, uh, that was the strategic direction in this chapter and the chapters to come was to try to get to a higher level with more strategies and policies directed in this area. And then I also think later on, the focus on implementation to make it a living document that we cross things off and add things into the list and. In terms of.
I like the native, uh, the invasive. I like that under biological resources on page thirty two.
I would, the only thing I would, um, and, uh, is when we talk about healthy plant communities. Again, that's one of those things that maybe people don't know. They're like, but, you know, my dad planted this burning bush. And it's healthy, you know what I mean? And, um, so I would just, you know, maybe reference native pollinating plants or something like that there, just to make it a little more specific. Cause, cause you do mention about, um, you know, the non-native invasive plants, which is great. And I would just, as an example of a positive, you know, the healthy plant communities. Um, you know, that, that, that would include native pollinating species and plants or something along those lines.
Yeah, I think that this can be a situation where the Conservation Commission can give us additional feedback. We have, there's some chapters in the plan where the sidebar space is at a premium. This one, we've got a blank sidebar here and I do.
We could give, you know, when you give a list, and it's easy to do, online resources for native planting.
Yeah.
You know, there's a, that Yukon extension, it's, it's very good. So, um, I will talk to Marjorie about that.
Excellent.
Very much. You are welcome.
Um, before we go, next week is a regular meeting at seven.
You got it in the one. I got it set up.
Oh, you gotta get seven.
It's a regular meeting next week at seven, cuz our regular meetings have already been.
Yeah, next week is gonna be a, a regular.
At seven, yeah.
Yeah. You might have a couple items.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, regular items, too.
Okay. Oh, wow.
I have a, in the one, commission meeting, I got you ready.
He's definitely, is it wetlands then? Um, so.
Seven thirty.
On thirty four, are we ready to go to thirty four?
So, Joe, that would be great, stay that.
Yeah, I will, um, talk to Marjorie about that. That would be a very good place for that. That, that's a great suggestion, Glenn. I appreciate it.
Going back to your, back to your plan verbs.
Yeah.
I don't really care. I don't, I don't invest in interest, but we say require low impact development, and we are doing an action set for the building management to do this. Right. Uh huh. We are.
Okay. And we're gonna go to zoning. We've asked for input.
Okay.
Just wanted to. It's not our fault that they didn't want to get it.
No, I'm sorry, no, but it's, I, I'm saying, is this a carryover from twenty seventeen?
No, what, what, I will tell you. Right, so I think we have to do that because if we're gonna hold their, and we're gonna go and present this, right, Glenn, but if we want this to be a living document that's really gonna push, then, then I think we do have to say, yes, we're gonna do certain things or ask other boards and commissions. That's why we ask for input. That's why we want it right to make this work. And so I think we have some work to do with zoning. I, and I want to say that it's not, um, for lack of trying on Glenn's. that it's not, for lack of trying on Glenn's part or the planning commission's part, it's just the way it is. And so I think personally, I want to kind of push the envelope to 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 do the things that we need to do and get them to do it. I'm hoping they'll be on board. You know, we'll have a new chair come fall or after the election. So, you know, I'm hoping that they'll, no.
Okay, and then so B goes to action step one. Do we have another policy or program that goes to action step two? And that was just me not being able to read this way that my connect the dots. And do we need that? Was really what.
This will be.
I'm just curious, like, do we need B as a policy and program if we're going to have an action step and or if we have an action step, do we need the policy and program to go with it?
That's a great question.
So on that show, what are you saying, Julie?
If if we have an action step to modify the land use regulations from corporate L I D approaches, are we being repetitive? If in fact, B up above says require use of low impact development. So it's almost a chicken and egg. Policies implement L I D, then the action step is you change your X. Or you say it once. I mean, we we could do, if we were sitting here as the planning implementation committee and we had just modified the land use regulation, we could put a check mark in that little box and say, great. But does that clear B up above? I'm not sure that it does. Maybe the verb, maybe point out that the verb requires not quite the right right verb there. So.
Encourage?
No, I'm going to say implement.
Okay.
Because I think even once we've adopted regulations, it's L I D is really a policy and an approach to stormwater drainage, which is ongoing and adept. And I think will always be implemented. So when you say require, that's almost. Exactly. And that's a policy is really an ongoing approach. So I think good observation. This didn't even come off the bird chart either.
But I didn't want to have legs in there, not really kind of right. I mean, right.
I think the action steps, I tried to be succinct to the point so that we knew if anybody asks us in the future, how did you do with implementing the last plan? You could say, and I think there's twenty-nine action steps. I forget exactly how many there are in the entire document. Say that we we got twenty-seven of twenty-nine or twenty of twenty-nine or whatever we got.
Yeah.
But we could say we did that. Things like policies, those are, we're always going to be implementing and doing these things in the future. We're not, we're not ever done with these. So if you can't, you can't say, well, you know, it's not that it did or didn't get implemented. We're still in the process because it's policy. So I'm going to go ahead and change that word there. Anything else on thirty-four?
Do we need I or is that implied? I just, it's like coordinate with other organizations?
Well, I always have, you know, the Farmington Valley Watership Association, the Front to River Watership. There's all these other entities that are out there.
Okay.
That do things. So I just think for.
So just have a general rather than, okay.
I think Conservation of Parks Commission, you guys are right. There's a lot of stuff going on.
You know.
Yeah.
Even the map that we're going to get to in the open space section, the land and communities in terms of the open space preservation efforts. So I think the whole can be greater than the.
So H, we're saying implement the native plant meadow mowing and other policies prepared by conservation and wetlands. And then the O, leader.
So this is like a running joke I had with Marjorie. She kept saying the plan of conservation development has to say this and has to say this and has this. Marjorie, everything's going to come back to you guys. This is, it's your to-do list. That's all it is. So we don't have to list all of your to-do lists in the plan. You guys keep doing what you're doing.
All right, so that's.
That's that's why I kind of worked this. So the next chapter in terms of open space, there were some significant changes too, and you will see from the amount of red text in here.
Yeah.
I I think. Big reword. Yeah, mostly a reword, but we hadn't really sort of defined what we meant by the term open space, which was kind of important. How important this has been to Simsbury over the years. The importance to residents, survey results. And then different parts of the vision overall. So any thoughts on page thirty-five? How about thirty-six or thirty-seven?
Hey, this is like a word setting thing too. I'm sorry. Where it says in the middle of the page in two thousand nineteen, an online survey.
Yep.
And then three lines down, the questions related. Should that be mostly? Or is it most? Whatever.
Well, I think mostly is right.
I know that's.
No, it's not. I I joke, Erin. I say, I grew up in Canada. It's English.
I think if it was read late, it would be like read late mostly, but related most to.
Oh.
You know.
Oh, yeah, I guess you're right.
No, I know, but.
Many of the questions related most.
Let me take a look at that wording. And then figure out a way to.
Yeah, either one. I thought this was really good.
How about pages thirty-eight and thirty-nine?
Oh, likes to add a master plan link.
Where it says down, maybe ten bullets. At the end, it has character.
Yeah, I I did a word search for character.
So protect unique natural features that help define Simsbury's character, which shouldn't be ambiance.
I think we should go with ambiance.
Okay. And then the last one. Oh, the last one. So it was this promote and preserve old and old growth forest. Did you, you meant to say both, right? Old forest and old.
I'm sorry, where are you reading here?
The last bullet? Yeah, is it old and old growth or just old growth?
Just let's just go with old growth.
Okay.
I did the same.
Is it an old growth forest of certain age type of forest?
But that's also, that would also be an old forest.
But an old forest wouldn't be an old growth forest.
But there is a lot of movement in time, like building what, you know, as an old growth forest designation and there's a lot of.
I just realized how silly perhaps it is to use bullets here. Maybe we just, we just use numbers because if we're trying to refer to, you may be, you said maybe it's tenth on the list. Why would you make a decision there?
You know what? Really? I think the bullets would.
Okay, you make a good point on it, but then I would be consistent because even.
I would keep it as bullets too.
Me, take, take a rest.
I know. That's true. Because invariably the numbers never line up.
Old forest.
Anything else on thirty-eight, thirty-nine?
No, you know, the map again, it's again, it's not meant to for people to really reference. It's, you know.
Uh, you thinking about the map at the top of thirty-nine?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's not, again, it's not meant to.
No, but I think I can talk to Marjorie and figure out or maybe the land trust. Not sure who prepared the map, but it's got the land trust logo on here. But if it's going to be parked on their website, I can hyperlink to it.
Oh, okay.
So the only challenge is if seven years from now they redesign their website, I believe this. Yeah, it's the only thing, but if I just.
I think it's fine then. It's just small, but I I don't think if people.
Well, I think what I got from it, even at the scale, was the amount of open space. You suddenly realize how massive really the plane is.
Yes.
And then all of the other areas around it, you know, regional connectivity and possibilities here.
You know, so the sidebar on this preserve open space. And we talked about diversity, equity and inclusion. And then we start talking about affordable housing. I don't know if that works with diversity, equity. I don't know.
Well, so the.
What do you mean? You don't think that we preserve the open space?
I meant to highlight this because I was at the meeting at the Simsbury Library in the basement. And the conversation got to the point that for many years, whenever Simsbury wanted to acquire open space, the issue is we're going to stop housing coming.
Yep.
And, you know, that's why we have to to do this. And the issue is, well, wait a second here. Are we actually going to set these up as competitors or could they be collaborative? And the issue is, it might be pieces of land in our open space inventory that we could put a few units of affordable housing on. Or we buy open space and we can do housing and open space on the same parcel. So the the this is a shot across the bow to say we can find a way to do both.
I would lean, so here's my my negative reaction on this. When I go back and I look at diversity, it's talking about celebrating a variety of gender, race, age, identity. Equity, it's maintenance, it's, you know, maintenance and fairness. So right there, affordable housing, maybe. And then it's the culture. I just, I I don't see affordable housing having anything to do with version including inclusion. I see it more with sustainability.
Um, that's interesting.
I'm on page thirty-nine.
Sidebar.
Of the sidebar.
The sidebar. I just, we keep talking about opens, it's either open space or affordable housing. And like, I don't want to perpetuate this perception that people have that D E I has to do with affordability and housing. Like, that's my my negative robot. I don't think we should. I'll just, I'll just.
So I agree.
You agree with that, Marcus? Of course. See, I I hear people say this all the time. I liked this because I think it does.
My thought was going to, my suggestion would be that maybe the logo here, which pulls it out as a D E I focused. Maybe what we need to do is just have a sidebar, basically this statement. So it says, listen, these do not have to be competing objectives.
Correct.
And maybe if we have done this poorly in the past by demonizing housing for the purposes of acquiring open space, now perhaps our understanding is a little bit more nuanced and we can find ways to deal with both of those. But we don't need the D E I logo there to do that.
Right. I know. Yeah. Yeah, yes, I know. I see what you're saying. I agree with you, but I like the sidebar.
I like the sidebar. I don't like the association to D E I.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Now, I agree with you.
But because, you know, this is going to be where we're getting.
I thought you were saying you didn't like the sidebar.
Sorry, I did not.
No, it's really important because now, as we've been finding out, when we didn't get ahead of this, it gets forced on us in ways that we can do better if we'd been ahead of it. I mean.
Yeah, no, I agree.
The whole town manager's staff.
Marcus, three, three, two. That's what you were saying. Yeah. Okay, so that makes sense then. All right.
Yeah, and I thought of it as if we wanted to associate it to an overarching sustainability, maybe a better alignment to that.
Yeah, so I was a little nervous and hesitant writing this because I thought there could be some pushback from open space organizations in town. But I do think it's a dialogue we need to have, that it can't be open space expensive everything else. We can find ways to collaborate on this stuff.
There's that meeting and and I must say, a number of the people who pushed so hard on metal lands were like, oh, well, that wasn't, you know.
That wasn't our job, right?
Yeah, and actually, the housing that was taken wasn't affordable anyway, was.
No, it wasn't. But I remember this conversation very strongly.
But I do remember at the base.
Yes.
This was sort of the mantra, is that we have to preserve our character and our open space. And when you realize that, you know, that there could have been housing opportunities, a lot of things like that. So let's just rock this out and make sure we find a balance.
Wait, you need an innovative solution for housing?
We do, but I think I've done some more quick number two days around the state on this particular issue. I think it's a dialogue in every community that needs to start now. And we're not going to solve it in a week or a month or even a year. But over the next five years, I think we're going to make much more progress, find our level, if you will, and then keep going. So this P O C D can help satisfy this.
And I'm bringing that up just because of the noise level with the most recent affordable housing issue. And, you know, how do you plan an innovative way to your point about utilizing this land in some way?
It's a really nice part of it. It is perfect near Latimer Lane. I mean, shit, if we'd just gotten ahead of this, it's not that we don't want affordable housing. We want to do it right. We do it well and we can and we will.
Um, so a couple of things here, I think. There's enough policies and action steps here that it ended up broken up on two pages, so I need to.
That, but never mind.
On which pages?
Uh, pages forty and forty-two.
Oh, yeah.
Continued on each.
Like, there is a part of me that feels like if we have time, we look for everything that we should look at the policies, the action items with a fresh lens instead of just.
I would agree.
Doing them through the book. So maybe not. Like, we should, I would vote for suggest we take one of our sessions if we're done on May thirty-first, if time permits, and really look at each of the action steps with a fresh lens and making sure that it matches the changes that we've added in the book.
I think that.
You don't think it. And you know what, Erin? I wasn't here for the one we built twenty seventeen, so it might be me walking into action steps that had been done for part of twenty seventeen. So it could be a Julie thing. I'm just seeing him in red font and I was like.
So, but I.
So hang on a second here.
Okay.
Um, the policies, the red font is going to get really confusing here.
Yeah.
What changed or didn't change? So in the final plan, it is, or was, or is, I guess. My intention that the action steps are in fact red text. Those are going to jump off the page and view, and the implication is these are things.
But this is not edited, underlined red text. It's carryover from the previous plan.
Almost throughout the plan, I had to seriously reduce the number of policies. They're cut in half. And so things were merged, reworded, et cetera. Almost all of this text is new, so I.
That's why I was saying, because I was like, this is matching the new, but you were thinking it was carried over.
Infusing.
I feel it's worth conversation to ensure that we're all aligned on our views, the right things, instead of just looking for words.
So but so what I would challenge then is why aren't we doing it? If you have questions about the action steps, we should be doing it as we're reviewing the.
We could.
That's what.
I think the other sense, just for discussion purposes, could be to kind of strategically, let's get through many pieces of the document. Originally in the schedule, what I had built in was a prioritization exercise, where we're going to get to the point and we're going to say like, for me, this is a number five priority. Or this, you know, stopping boarding means number one, and we're going to see where these things start to shake out. But I do think getting the wording right is going to be kind of integral.
Oh, absolutely. No, I agree with that, but I I, for me, I'd rather do it as we're reviewing that chapter so that if we're reviewing the chapter, we're reviewing the action steps at the same time. No, that's.
I'm I'm good with that.
I don't know what other people think. What are you saying? Do that and then go back and do it again, Julie?
One or the other. Yeah, I wouldn't do it both.
Oh, okay. So you'd rather go through this and then go in back and do the action steps? That's what you're saying?
Yeah, I probably said that. I probably already forgot what I said.
That's what that's what I was hearing.
Okay.
So I think it makes sense to be like, let's just sort through this and then be like, is it the order?
I just feel the action steps require like due diligence and a little bit more research and I don't know. I've been focusing.
Oh, you, okay. So you've been focusing the other part, not necessarily.
Other part, yeah. And like this tactical open space plan. Where did this come from, Glenn?
No.
This is from the twenty seventeen P O C D.
No.
Or did you generate this as something? So.
Yeah.
Okay.
Where's that though? Oh, that on page forty-two.
Like, we've only done it on thirty-four. So it's like, I looked at it for thirty-four. There was only two action steps. We had some conversation. And now it's forty-two. It's like.
There was, these are bigger. That's definitely.
Yeah, sort of like a tactical open space plan. Open space, but I mean, I don't know. I just think it warrants conversation.
Yeah, so I think I want to make sure that this plan reflects the thoughts and ideals of the commission. Yeah, so I think, uh, I want to make sure that this plan reflects the thoughts and ideals of the commission. That comment, uh, you may recall in the public information meeting, as a gentleman got up, what board committee he was on, but he made the observation that since we over the years acquired all these little pieces of open space and everything else, he says, you know, they're, they're basically not doing anything in terms of our open space system, and why can't we sell these to the abutters or put these restrictions on them so that they maintain them and we're not responsible?
Right, that was Bill. Yeah, it was about the same bill. That was Bill. And Bill.
The phraseology I used was, it makes sense to me, I had it in some situations, I called that a tactical open space plan. But I think the issue is this, um, maybe for our meeting next week, that we can come back to the natural resources and the open space chapters. And the first thing we'll do at next meeting is, are there any comments on the policies or the action steps? So we can, as Aaron says, integrate that discussion as we go through the chapters in the future. But because we haven't been doing that quite so far, and people may have glossed over these pages, make sure we can.
There's just a few out here, sort of like, you know, rezone Meadowlands to an open space category. Why is it not?
Because it was, it was.
It's five parcels, we voted on re-categorizing it. There's some agriculture.
We did, but the zoning is still, it's a special residential zone, I'm trying to remember what the actual jurisdiction is here.
I mean, we don't talk about it now, but like, these are the conversations, like, well, what are we, what are we asking people to do?
Yeah.
And, right, and I don't disagree, I, but I guess my expectation is that when we were going to go page by page, chapter by chapter, and talk about, but, I mean, no, no, but that's.
Level setting for me is always good.
But I think, well, but if we're going to do the priority too, I, you know, I had some questions around this, you know, I mean, a few.
What I'd like to do is make sure that we get these, we're going to share this in the next month or.
But we can do it in the next.
With other boards and commissions, we're going to ask the residents, we're going to ask for their input, and if they start asking questions and we don't feel like we've vetted it correctly, it's not a great position to be in. So I would want to make sure that you guys are comfortable with this wording. So I think my sense would be to make sure that you guys have a chance for dialogue, whether that's tonight or whether we're going to sort of skip over this and come back to the beginning.
We can come back to it next week. So forty, page forty-two.
Yeah, I think that maybe we'll just go back to natural resources, which is the first policy chapter, that probably won't take very much time. But into open space, just make sure again, we're on the right page and then move on there.
Yeah, we, I mean, that's fine, it may, we can.
Yeah, and then I think we'll get caught up, and then any chapter from here on out, we'll just, people need to take a look at those pages so that we catch where to go through.
Can I ask you about on forty, this is, is there a reason why that box isn't centered or that you had it over?
Yeah, no, I, I noticed that on the national resources page. So the document set up with this wider.
Okay.
Couldn't get this, these tables to fit. So.
Oh, so.
Wider or the font smaller, which I didn't think was a great idea. So I think what I need to do on these pages is take the goals and strategies and make those wider, since the pages.
Okay, I was just curious.
Now, it's a layout thing and.
Okay.
It's easy to see it in hindsight.
I didn't, it didn't bother me.
It did me, because I like. But yeah, no, I, I just, not bothered, but I just noticed.
No, I think.
I do, I don't know, I just, it was like, or do it over on the other, I don't know.
Yeah. Um, something I wanted to point out on the, on the map on page forty-one. Got this realization with the Meadowwood acquisition, that the opportunity really does exist in some range to create this, what's called possible northern loop. And it's a way, as you know, there's a sidewalk on West Street to get us to the high school, through the back of the high school, onto the streets to get us over to Cimbray Farms. And then from Cimbray Farms north, there is town, state, open space, all the way around, that brings us almost back to where Wagner Fort is, the skating center.
Wow.
And it's, it's a big picture, longer term vision, but it didn't exist as an opportunity until the Meadowwood acquisition came into being and all of a sudden, and a connection through to even McLean.
Yeah.
So my wife's going to kill me because it goes right by our house. But I just think it's an awesome attribute and asset for the community. So I just want you to know that this black line on here is a visionary concept. It may or may not get traction, but it ties into the strategy that started, I think, back in the two thousand and seventy OCD, which is on page thirty-nine, is the concept of the major north-south connections.
Yeah.
But how to tie in east-west connections as well. And I think, it's amazing to me how much use the Greenway Trail gets. And I'm not saying that this is a paved trail of the same sort of caliber or whatever, but the fact that these loops exist could be a tremendous opportunity. So if you're not sure that you want to advocate for this or show it in the plan, we can take it out. But I didn't want to just slide by without calling something.
Yeah, someday they'll just turn it into an outer bill.
Turn it into what?
An outer bill.
Out here too?
Out here, like in D.C. or something.
You know, fifty years from now, when they put the high school plan out.
Well, at that point, Town Hall will be at that high school, isn't it, right? Belly lump.
But I mean, you say, see how.
There's a blue way, you know, there's a bicycle trail. It's not even a bicycle trail, it's the concept, the resident here was sort of a kayak canoe opportunity. Oh, I remember, oh, I got you, I got you. So.
I was looking at it, I thought it was the bike trail, I was looking at the bike trails, this is the Greenway.
Yeah, the Greenway Trail is the orangey thing.
So the blue way is, what is it, water, over water and land?
Yeah, it's just water, you know, rent a canoe and, and, you know, you can get in at the, uh, one eighty-five bridge and go all the way down to Curtis Park in Tarrick.
Oh, yeah. You have to get out.
I got it.
We're a cloud bridge, and you don't even have to rent a canoe. My girlfriend and I do this many times every summer, just take a couple pool floaties.
Yeah.
Lay on them. That's the most fun thing to do.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, not that.
We are so lucky to have that.
Oh, and. Did you, did you want to go to like eight? What do you want to?
You know what? I mean, I didn't. If we can get through page fifty-six, which is beyond the honest chapter.
Yeah. Okay.
That's now the conservation element of the plan and essentially behind us, and now we're into, and I don't think it's quite halfway through the plan, but I think it's sort of the media.
Yeah, okay, all right, so let's, yeah. Perfect, perfect. So page forty-three?
Yeah, anything on forty-three?
We mentioned the online survey.
Yeah.
Quite a bit, so when we say, in an online survey, should we say, in the online survey? Because we've already referenced it, like, so it's more familiar, you know?
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Because we've already referenced it a few times, like, it's, it's not new at this point, I think, if you read it.
Forty-seven, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do you know it, okay.
Yeah, and we have the survey icon, right, for the workshop and the online survey?
Well, anytime we've used, we did a survey, I think it was a telephone survey, it's part of the twenty-seventeen POCD. And some of those results are also in here because they, they show a timeline. This isn't something ephemeral that just showed up, it shows community input over time. So we use the survey icon both, for both situations. But I think you're right, maybe we refer to this as in the twenty-twenty-two online survey.
Yeah.
And I, I was just building on that, is that I, do you put the icon in here? So it's like this consistency of that icon of when we're actually getting voice. Do we need to insert that everywhere or cut that? Or is it sufficient to just stay online survey, or the survey?
That's what I was saying, the survey, and that's what I, you know.
But it's like, yeah, it's like, when do you do the icon, when do you not?
Yeah, I, that's interesting, I generally.
I don't know.
Sidebar, but I think you're right, if there's survey results on the page.
Doing.
Yeah.
I don't know if we need to.
It's a good question. I liked on forty-four, the sidebar.
Good, about forty-four, forty-five?
So, this is where, connected it back to that earlier page ten, where we say community events. And then up at the top, we say, listing of some current and former ambiance resources. Do we just call these assets? Like, I was trying to go back and forth to page ten, but it was late last night, and I couldn't find something. You know how, oh, yeah, it was what we want to protect, maintain, enhance community assets, and it was historic resources, farm, scenic, community, something or other. I don't care what we call it, it's just, it just seems like we call it assets in one page and ambience in another.
I didn't see the assets on ten.
On page ten?
Oh, yeah, there it is, maintaining is the asset.
Oh, yeah, and character was the word before.
It was, yeah, now that's a good, that's, that's good, because I'm thinking.
So you're saying, take out ambiance resource and put it assets could be one possibility?
What I'm sensitive to now is that we interchange the words, we sort of. So as a result, when we've done that, none of the words carries the weight that we would like them to. So I'm wondering if in fact assets is the overarching concept, underneath that is, um, ambiance and sense of place. All right, so those are sort of two subparts, and I think now it kind of starts to hang together a little bit better. So let me.
Okay.
I'll go through it with that in mind and.
Assets, ambiance.
Yeah, assets.
Yeah, yeah.
You get it.
Yeah.
And I couldn't articulate it, I just knew there was something. Good ad for the private schools.
Yeah.
Well, do we know what the word before assets were in the bottom half of forty-four, for the jury?
So. No, it couldn't have been, could it?
Oh, yeah, sure.
And resources.
I can tell you for sure, definitely was not.
It was not resources.
Oh, I think I said race word.
The jury posts were posted, or they were.
Oh, is that this weekend? Oh.
Yeah, yeah, so the wording in the, in the prior plan was character resources.
Yeah.
But through, through these last one, two, three, four.
Uh, yeah, so character, the first one, the listing of some recognized character resources, we say assets. Yeah, in reality, community character is not any one of these things, and we said community assets are not just any one of these things. So. Let me go back and take a look at the use of assets, ambiance, and sense of place. And I think I just need to be a little bit more consistent in terms of how those phrases are used.
I have a real dumb question on these list, there are no dumb questions.
Well, I can hear what I'm gonna add.
So I'm reading through this, and I'm thinking, hey, that's something I never heard of on aesthetic places. The grave site on each week, we talked streets, ox cart death, I'm thinking, I wonder what that is? And I'm looking, I'm trying to find, and I look at the legend, and I know it's going to be a red number, and it says it's thirty, but I look, and the only place I find thirty is not doing those things. It's up around, um, you know, Hoskins.
The Ox, I've been to, I've seen the marker.
Oh, there's two.
It's right near Tananger.
Okay, but it's not called out here on this map, and instead, there appears to be something else.
Yeah.
As thirty. And again, it's not like I'm an eagle eye, I just am kind of curious.
For the old ox cart death.
I can't see.
There's, for the grave site.
There's like four thirties still on here.
Yeah, and so thirty is, well, in the legend, it's thirty-one, the tobacco fields, barns, firetown, and Hoskins. So that's, that's better than thirty-one.
They still can't find thirty, you know, where the ox cart.
It's on East New John, right near the entrance to Tananger.
It's twenty-two.
Are there supposed to be one of each on this?
There's thirty-one.
No, there can be multiple, because again, the tobacco fields.
Oh, yeah, thirty-one, that's not, yeah, I think some of these numbers were wrong.
Well, it's base.
Yeah. So then let's be twenty-nine, twenty-nine must be what you're talking about, because that's kind of new, the base is standard.
Did we add an aesthetic place?
I don't believe that we did.
In twenty seventeen.
I think what makes sense to do is for me to go back and audit these. Because we just carried the map forward because there were no changes to it. So it was probably wrong in twenty-seventeen POCD, which means it might have been wrong in the two thousand and seventy POCD. So I, I just think it makes sense to audit. So if you find me out there looking for a grave site on East. I'll have a reflection best. And it's like, in a, in a bunch of brush. Well, of course, it's right off the road, it was an ox cart death, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Second, though, wasn't that somebody came to us for something and they had to?
No, that was the fire, remember, it was like off of, yeah.
Oh, that was, it wasn't this, but remember they had a marker and the marker had to be maintained, and a person came, okay, it wasn't this.
Fire, um, yeah, it was like.
Oh, wait, you get a good point, because my husband would kill me if they don't include his favorite marker.
Uh-oh.
Um, yeah, there was, um, my husband is Dutch, and right near us on off of Terry's Plains is a field where, um, way back in the sixteen hundreds, the local militia was trained to fight against the Dutch threat in.
It's on page forty-eight, or four, number four.
It's number four, very good.
Is that equation number four? Yeah, and it's on page.
The marker is gone, and he used to take all the Dutch people down to see it, because they thought, oh, this is the coolest thing we've seen in America.
Sixty-nine, we go back, right?
All right, but, but that marker's gone now. And so I said, I think it's the Boy Scouts that put that out, but the listings were old and, you know, they weren't permanent things, so.
All right, so are, are we on forty-nine?
Um, yeah, so I think. I'm sure, I'm up to forty-nine.
Yeah, militia training in Vanquell against the Dutch.
Uh, anything up to forty-nine? Or on forty-nine?
That was my handwriting.
I can't, I can't read, I'm here. So, uh, whenever you guys are ready, I think, I'm up to fifty-two.
Okay.
And this is the conversation that, again, we may want to kick this over to our next meeting, maybe that's the thing for us to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had some questions on that, so we can.
I'd like to have George here as well, because there's quite a bit of history on this. You know what, you want to just break here?
Yes.
Our stories have to be consistent, we tell George that the meeting irretrievably broke down. Here, she wasn't here.
If you're not here, it doesn't happen.
That's good, though.
You didn't have native trees and vegetation, that's important for our ambiance, we've got it in two chapters, it's pretty impressive.
Margaret, she'll look up, who's still excited.
I know, like, so, but then she'll understand.
The funny thing is, I did get an email that, that had these different thoughts, like, in every chapter, and it really wasn't relevant, man.
Subject matter, expert.
There we go.
Find your connection.
Everywhere.
Everywhere.
Well, um, I'm delighted with our progress here today, so, uh, next week, if I understand correctly, seven o'clock, and I think we're in the main meeting room?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you.
It is a regular meeting, so that's why. Um, he said there'll probably be more, there'll be some business, and I will spend the rest of the time on that. Anytime we're here. Anytime we're here. So this was six, next week is seven. We're not meeting on the sixteenth because you had.
I have.
The twenty-third is a regular meeting. If we need to meet on the thirtieth, it will be six o'clock.